With that, I think I've got it as seven oh one. So I'd like to convene. The May thirteenth twenty twenty five planning board meeting for Wakefield. So, welcome Kristen Weekly to the, uh, to the planning board as our newest elected duly elected member. Um, very glad to have you come aboard and very excited to start working with you.
Yes, I'm very excited as well.
So, the first order of business is the approval of the April fifteenth twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Uh, as a reminder to all members of the board, if you were not in attendance, uh, you do not have to vote one way or the other. Abstaining is an option. So, yes, no, or abstention will be what, uh, we'll be looking for from everyone. So, with that, we'll do a, uh, does anyone, did everyone have the ability to receive and provide any comments as required on those meeting minutes?
Yes, good, good to go, so.
So, in that case, do I hear a motion to accept the April fifteenth twenty twenty five meeting minutes as presented? Uh, Bill, I, I saw your lips move, but I did not hear.
Alright, um, so moved.
Motion by Theo, do we hear a second? Seconded by Kevin, so I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Bill? Let the record show that Bill gave a thumbs up, uh, so that'll count that as a yes, and Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so motion passes five to nothing. So, with that, uh, we can move on to item number, oh, Susan?
I think Kristen has to abstain.
Yes.
Well, that's what I thought, that's why I didn't say anything before, cuz I wasn't there.
That'll be. Four, four.
Four oh. Thank you for the correction, Susan, keeping us honest. Uh, so then I'll move on to item number three, election of the chair and vice chair. So, members of the board, as you're probably all aware, uh, at the turn of each year, uh, our board is, uh, to elect a new chair and a new vice chair, uh, to serve the dirt duties, uh, until the election for next town. For the next townwide election. Uh, before we proceed into this, I just wanna see, Bill, do we have you, uh, from an audio perspective yet? There we go, I think we got you.
Yeah, I think jumping out, jumping in helped. My zoom updated like five minutes before the meeting started, so.
As always, right?
Yep.
So, with that being said, uh, so we'll move over to election of the chair and the vice chair, so typically the way we do this is we run. We'll do the election of the chair, and then subsequently, we'll do the election of the vice chair. And then the whoever is elected as chair will immediately take control of said meeting, so. Um, with that, I'll open it up to election of the chair and, uh, make, uh, open up to any comments or questions from other members of the board. I see Mr. Spalding.
I'd like to nominate Jim Hogan, if you would be, um, serve another year as our chair, that would be wonderful.
Uh, so, I would be willing to do so, um, and other members of the board, feel free if you have any other, uh, comments, concerns, or questions.
I'll second Bill's motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate you, you being willing to do it, so, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Spalding, seconded by Mr. York, roll call vote, uh, Theo, no?
I'm sorry, Chi- Mr. Chair, we need to see if there are any other nominations.
Oh, we do? I thought that once you have a motion on the floor, you have to take it as.
I'm just looking, I think when we nominate, we keep it open until there's any other nominations for the chair position.
Oh, I apologize, I thought that, I thought that once there's a motion on the floor, you have to resolve the motion before you can.
Um, that's true, I don't think we should make a motion, so we could take that back.
Okay.
Nominate, I don't think I made a motion, I think I was just like to nominate.
Oh.
You have to accept the nomination, and then we have to see i- if anybody else accepts a nomination to be chair.
Gotcha, okay.
So, there's no motion for this.
Okay, apologies. Uh, so in that case, uh, so we have one nomination on the floor, does anyone else have a nomination they'd like to set forth for share of the planning board? Okay, uh, seeing none, then in that case, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
Like to make a motion to, um. See, I don't even think we actually make a motion to do this, but I'd like to make a motion that Jim Hogan is the chair of the planning board. For the next planning board calendar year.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion by Spill, second by Kristen, uh, so Theo?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, in that case, we'll, uh, I'll be the, I'll serve as the chair for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six calen- or, uh, planning board session, and we'll move to election of the vice chair. So, I'd like to open up for any nominations.
Um, I'd like to nominate Kevin.
Kevin, do yours, no, Kevin, do you accept?
Sure.
Sorry, that was a good pause.
Right, right, it's okay if you don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Uh, so Kevin has accepted the nomination, anyone else like to nominate another member of the board? Okay, seeing none, then if Kevin's the only nomination, I don't know to correct what Bill was saying, I don't know if we need to do another motion, right?
No, I don't think we need to do motions at all for chair and vice chair, we just, if no one else is running, that person, yeah.
Okay.
Can we, can we, can we just affirm Kevin with a five oh vote, though?
If you so choose, uh, if you make a motion, you can do, we can do that, but otherwise, I'll.
It's alright, yeah, we can move on.
Okay, so in that case, uh, so I will be the chair for this year, and Kevin will serve as the vice chair. And that will close item number three unless anyone has any other questions or comments. Mr. Spalding?
We do have other positions that need to be appointed by the newly, um, elected chair.
Yes.
Yes, right.
Secretary and treasurer, I wanna say?
Um, yes, treasurer, if there are anything that needs to be signed, if it can't be signed, obviously, that would be, yeah. The chair could cover for that, but, um, I would like to, um, continue as secretary if you would have that as a position that I could do. Mister Chair.
Does anyone have objection to Mr. Spalding continuing to act as secretary?
No, and the, the role of secretary is you've, uh, sort of compiling, uh, notes, uh, letters, um, for the, for the.
If anything needs to be drafted, um, I could do that, um, I have a whole library full of things that we previously did. Um, also, I do sign off on any, um, clerical type things, and I know. If we did have a treasurer position, I don't know if we've had that in the past. Where there would be somebody, but I've been the person signing off on any, um, for example, Susan, our. Scribe, uh, what, what was the right position for you? Susan, sorry, clerk, thank you. For clerk, um. And I could continue to do that as secretary.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, that makes sense unless others have any disagreements with that, as a methodology, seems like it's been working to date.
Yeah, that, that'd be, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other comments, concerns, questions related to election of chair, vice chair, or any other nominated positions within the internal board? In that case, uh, seeing none, I'll move to item number four, one fifty eight, one fifty four Salem Street subdivision. This is a continuation of a previous public hearing, uh, and so I believe Attorney McGrail, you're here representing the applicant?
I am, Mister Chair, uh, good evening, uh, Attorney Brian McGrail, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, on this, uh, project, uh, with me tonight is, uh, Nick Leo, who is, uh, the principal of both owner applicants. Uh, the owners of one fifty four and one fifty eight, uh, Salem Street, and also Richard Williams, who is our site civil engineer. Uh, from Williams in Sporages. Um, I think, uh, to refresh the board's memory, this is a, a four lot subdivision. Uh, two little lots will have two family dwellings, one will have a single family dwelling, and then lot three in the back of the cul-de-sac. At the end of the cul-de-sac, was originally proposed to have thirteen, uh, units comprised of, you know, for lack of a better term, townhouses. Um, as you know, this is also being permitted, uh, for the townhouse aspect, uh, with the Board of Appeals and. Uh, the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over the entire, uh, project. Um, so, um, what we've done is, we've revised our subdivision plan to accommodate the eight units because. The revision had to be done a little bit in the layout, but more, uh, are primarily with the, uh, drainage, um, stormwater management, uh, for the project. Because, um, that lot, uh, kinda goes hand in hand with the roadway that, uh, is under your jurisdiction. So, we've revised our stormwater report. Um, we have, um, uh, in addition to the revised subdivision and revised stormwater report, we have submitted a detailed landscaping plan. For the entire development, um, and, uh, including all of the lots and, um, the lot three. Um, attached dwelling, uh, complex, um, lot. And we have also filed with the Conservation Commission. Um, and we had told you that we were getting ready to do that, we have now filed, and in fact, we've had our first hearing before the Conservation Commission. Uh, on this project. Uh, we will be back at the Zoning Board of Appeals tomorrow night with our revised, uh, site plans. Um, and, uh, we also submitted to you, and I'll go over those a little bit, uh, tonight, the architectural plans for. The attached dwelling complex on lot three. Um, although it's not jurisdictional for your board, I thought would be helpful for you to have a full context of the entire development. Um, instead of just showing you kind of a flat, uh, piece of land where boxes are going. Um, I thought it, you know, in, in all fairness to your board, it would be helpful to have a good idea of what's transpiring on the whole property. So, I've submitted those more for informational purposes for you, more than jurisdictional purposes, and we'll go through those a little bit tonight, so you get a feel for the entire project.
Okay, well, thank you for that background.
Um, I'm, I'm almost done. The stormwater is under review by the, uh, town engineer. Um, that is, as I mentioned, been submitted, he's in the process of reviewing that, uh, he will review. It's Conservation Planning and, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, one of our butters, the owners of Nablus Way, they're here tonight, they're represented by council, they have peer review. And is, uh, you'll hear from them tonight, we met with them today on some of their concerns, and we're trying to address them as well. Um, so tonight, what we'd like to do, uh, Mister Chair, if it's okay with you, I'd like Rich Williams to go through the revised subdivision, uh, in some detail. Then I'll go through the landscaping in the architectural, uh, plans. Um, we are also, I, you know, it, this question will probably come up, so I'll nip it in the bud, we are working with the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, as you were requested. To find a tasteful light pole, uh, that will work on the roadway and not be too, uh, um, you know, overwhelming. On the road, uh, proper height and, uh, lumens, et cetera. So, to refresh your memory on the, on the subdivision plan, there's some things that you would request it. Um, you had said if there's any sightline protection required out on Salem Street that you'd like that to be shown. The Traffic Advisory Committee, as you know, we're, we've gone through their process, they have no issues, but they do want to have areas out front. Uh, marked in, in as low vegetation areas, and that's something that we're showing on the plan, and we can condition to satisfy that. Request, just for sight distance, you would ask for a stop sign, uh, at the end of the road, you'll see that. You wanted a clear delineation of the limit of work, which we'll go over that, um, in his presentation. An O and M plan was requested, that has been, that is part of the stormwater report, and I will expand on that as this project evolves. To incorporate other aspects of it. Uh, you would want some elevations of a, an ele- sample elevation of a wall cross section, which Rich will talk to you about. Um, and, you know, those are some of the highlights, so. Um, if I may, Mister Chair, um, I'd like to hand it over to Rich to go through the revised, uh, definitive subdivision plan. In detail, and I'll take it back from him on landscaping and architecture.
Yep, uh, so that sounds like a plan, with the exception of before we do that, I just wanna do by way of context. Especially given if anyone who's coming to this process midway through, some background that relates to the, the historical nature of the project, and it's kinda subdivisions for it large. So. If you bear with me, um, so for those who are unfamiliar with the process, the, the subdivision control process, which is what. Been in process right now, is a statutory process that's, uh, established in Mass General Law. Chapter forty one, section eighty one, that gives property rights, property owners the right to subdivide parcels into smaller lots. This planning board, uh, has established rules and regulations via the bylaw, section, uh, thirty twenty, that defines, uh. Design and documentation requirements for subdivisions, and the rules and requirements are meant to ensure adequate access to all the lots and subdivision. And ensure adequate provision for water, sewage, drainage, and other requirements. Um, if the subdivision conforms with the rules and regs as outlined in our subdivision rules and regulations established by the planning board. Then we are obligated to approve said plan. Um, this is not considered discretionary permit, subdivision is considered a land right that property owners do have. Um, with that being said, if there are waivers that are requested as part of the subdivision. The board has discretion to either waive the requested waivers, or to not waive them, or to have a negotiation as part of conditions, as part of that. So, the, the, that. Ability to waive those requirements is at the sole discretion of the planning board, and, uh. They know that obviously will sometimes have those conditions I referenced earlier, but, um, and. Then the other thing is that I wanna make sure that it's very clear that the approval for the subdivision is only for the. Taking of one lot, and maybe even just smaller lots, if, if the applicant wants to build something on one of those lots, they have to go through. The typical zoning process, including if there are special permits required through the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is ongoing as part of this process. And. Any conservation impacts will be, has gone through the Conservation Commission, not through the planning board. So, that's why the, you, you heard, there's a reference to multiple concurrent reviews by. Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Conservation Commission, but fundamentally, this is about the subdivision of the lot. Into multiple smaller lots, and they associate impacts on water, sewage, and drainage, and traffic is another. Purview of the board, so, just wanna make sure that was very clear, and then the other thing is, this is a subdivision that we've met multiple times on, and been discussing since. I believe the first time was, uh, July of last year, so there's been a significant amount of back and forth, uh, regarding. The preliminary. Um, preliminary plan that was submitted to us, and then now all the way through these revised plans based on feedback from the ZBA. So, just wanna make sure that was very clear for everyone, and then, Richard, uh, more than happy to pivot over to yourself.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay?
Yes.
Alright, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um. And I'm, I know that we've talked about it, I am gonna just briefly, uh. Rehash what we've already talked about, I'll try not to, uh, uh, go into too much detail. But, um. The proposed road is, um. Right here, called Road A, we're actually, uh, calling it, uh, Timberwood Circle, uh, hoping that that gets accepted. Um. And that proposed road is forty feet wide, uh, which does require a waiver. And has a, uh, one hundred foot, uh, property line diameter, which meets the standards for the turnaround. Um. And that road will provide frontage to lot one, lot two, lot three, and lot four. Lots one and two are in the single residence zone. Uh, lot four is, uh, both in the single, in the general residence zone. Uh, we anticipate the house for lot four to be in the general residence zone, and. The, um, well, lot three is also in multiple zones, but the, um, the improvements are. Entirely within the industrial zone. The roadway, this is the profile of the roadway, so coming from Salem Street on your right, and, uh, towards the left. Takes you through the road into the circle, um, this point is the end of the circle. So, there's a high point, which is, uh, similar to the existing conditions on the site, there's a high point. Um, right about in here, and. Uh, from a drainage standpoint, the runoff from the high point back towards the, back toward Salem Street. Pardon me? This is the high point, back towards Salem Street is collected by these catch basins and goes into. Uh, our onsite drainage system. Um, and the runoff from the roadway from the high point back is collected. At the end of the circle and combines with the runoff from those catch basins. And is, um, rooted through. Uh, in this case, it's, uh, deep sump catch basins, um, and then into a stormwater. Um, treatment device, it's, uh, an oil and grit separator, and then. Into the subsurface system. Here with me. So, that's the subsurface system that I was, uh, just discussing, so from the end of the circle, um, collects into the subsurface system. That also, um, collects portions of, uh, both rooftops and, um. Stormwater within the driveway system into this catch basin, um, and then that infiltrates into the ground. And, uh, for all storms, except the one hundred year storm that is all infiltrated. The one hundred year storm, we expect, um, an overflow from that system, um, that will come out. Here, and I'll describe a little, that a little bit, um. In, in, uh, in a little bit. This system also takes portions of the roof, and portions of the, uh, the paved driveway. And infiltrates, uh, into the system, there is no, uh, outflow from this system in the hundred year storm. So, that's all contained. And then we have some, um, small detention basins at the back of units, uh, five through eight. That collect, um, the back of the roofs from these units, and some surface flow from. From the, the backyards, uh, that's collected, and then, um. Uh, in some storms, it, uh, overflows and flows towards the wetlands. So, um, it, it's a very detailed stormwater management, um, plan and report. Uh, but, uh, the gist of it, of the report is that, uh, we are complying with stormwater. Uh, the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations and Wakefield's Regulations, and we, uh, in all storm events, um, are. Either not exceeding or reducing the amount of runoff that leaves the site, and also. The, uh, volume of runoff, uh, throughout the storm is, um. Either equal or reduced, uh, from the existing condition. I'm just gonna take you to this, cuz it, I think it's a little bit easier to understand what's pervious and impervious. Uh, so you can see the road, uh, these driveways are impervious, um, these roofs. For lots one, two, and four, uh, each of those roofs has its own, uh, subsurface infiltration system to. Collect the stormwater from the rooftop and discharge that, um, into the ground. And this area here is, um, maneuvering and, uh, parking and access to, uh, garage space. For units one through eight. All of the units are, uh, a plan to be supplied by municipal water, we've got the municipal water on the site, it's been brought in. It's brought in during the, um. During the reconstruction of Salem Street, so it's, uh, it's off the road, uh, so. Uh, water will, uh, come down Road A, and then, uh, into, um. Lot, lot three, for purposes of feeding these units, um, and we've got multiple youth routes around the building, it's a little bit. Complicated, cuz we're trying to get water and sewer into these buildings, and it's small spaces. We've had some, uh, comment from the town engineer, and we are going to, uh, just discuss our. Access points for water and sewer, and, and make sure, make sure we're on the same page, but, uh, each unit has water and sewer. The sewer. Um, is all collected and discharged to the existing. Sewer main that runs through the back of the property, so this is an existing sewer main here. And we plan to tie into the main, uh, roughly in this location, um, and then that will continue through the property as it does now. And I, I think. Oh, let me not talk about the retaining walls, cuz I know that that was a question before. Uh, we do have several retaining walls on the property, um. This driveway. From the circle and towards, uh, unit eight, is elevated about seven feet above, um, the adjacent property, so. Uh, that wall is about seven feet high, and we've got, um. Anticipated to be a cast-in-place concrete wall with a, uh, cantilevered footing. Uh, and that occurs from the entrance, um, and up to unit eight. And, again, at the back of units four and five, we've got a wall, uh, that would be a similar construction. Uh, reinforced concrete that, uh, runs just outside the twenty-five foot. Um, no disturb for the Conservation Commission, um, and. We have, um. Heights, various heights of that wall, along the wall shown on the plan, um, in this location, we have, um. Is the two-foot parapet in its meeting grade, in this location, the, um, wall is nine feet tall. And in this case, it is, um, about, uh, four feet high. So, highest point is in here, it's about nine feet, and then tapers down from, uh, from nine to zero, and nine to zero again. And with that, I'll, uh, I'll open it up to questions.
Do any, uh, members of the board have any questions that they would like to pose to the applicant? Mister Spalding?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mister Williams, for going through, yes, a lot of work's been done, appreciate. I think most of the items on my checklist, um, you covered, um. Water, sewer, hydrant, where was the closest hydrant?
So, there are. Uh, two, there is a hydrant at the end of the circle.
Okay.
Which is located here, and then we've also added a hydrant within the site.
Alright.
So, if, if the, uh, the, a fire truck was pulling in, they could hook on to this hydrant. And, uh, operate in the open area there.
Mm-hmm. Um, let's see, you mentioned the drain, um, downspouts for, um. Lots one, two, and three, but I might have missed it if you mentioned it, so, for the other units, one through eight in the back. Are those downspouts going underground to the tank, or is it a surface?
No, underground.
Okay, they all are, okay.
Everything's underground, um. And everything goes to the subsurface system, except for the back of units, um, five through eight. Those will be collected in pipes, but they're discharged to the surface in this pond, and.
Okay.
Um.
And is that something that the Conservation Commission reviewed and was in favor of?
Uh, we went through it, they didn't, uh, say either way.
Yeah, it's still, that's still under review, Bill.
Okay, so I do understand.
Haven't, they haven't signed off on anything.
Right, and I do understand, and they're really good at reviewing this type of work, and I wanna make sure we're not. Um, discussing items that they will be working with, so I'll try to keep it to. I, I understand with all of the new work that's going on the site, there's still a good amount of water that needs to. That won't naturally now roll down. That won't naturally now roll down into the wetlands. So with the retaining walls, I know it's from seven feet at the top. For the north side, south side was nine feet tapering down to four. So with the height of the retaining wall, is there also has a fence? Garbrel been, I know there's like a two-foot-six fence. That's noted on the plan, does that sit on top of the retaining wall?
Yes, it's a it's a two-foot parapet. So the the wall will be elevated two feet above the ground and then there is a. A short fence on top of that.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's and it's both for fall protection and aesthetics.
Yes. Okay, I did see the fence, I I missed the parapet part, okay?
Yeah, and and I I have to admit that I I put that generic wall cross section on there, but. We forgot to put the parapet on, we do have the parapet grades. Marked on the on the wall grades, but we will we'll correct that that cross section.
Okay, thank you, because I did notice the the contour lines doing their thing properly, but I did not see the parapet, so if you could add that to the section.
Yeah, we will.
Alright, thanks. Let's see, I got the hydrant, the catch basins, trash. Attorney McGrail, can you refresh our memory on where the trash is? Was this going to be a private or were they gonna take the trash out to the curb? You're muted.
Thank you, the trash pickup. The street, the three lots, so one, two, and four will be town pickup.
Okay.
But the townhouses will be private. And they will have garages, two-car garages, and it will just be a private company that does trash pickup, no dumpster.
Okay, so the eight units in the back, correct?
Correct.
Will be private pickup.
Correct.
Alright. Is that a separate HOA that will be for the back then, is that how that works?
Yeah, what I what I envision here, we've got to fine tune it, but I envision you'll have. Three condominium associations, one for one for each two family and then one for the eight units. So three three condo associations and then a homeowner association for the whole project that everybody will be a member of.
So if a butter is having an issue. How do they know who to talk to? And I know this is a little bit jumping ahead. But we want to make sure, because in the past, as you know, we've had. After projects or during construction or after projects have been completed, we've had a butters approach us about. This wasn't done as planned or the runoff isn't as planned. How do we as a planning board? Make sure we're talking to the right HOA group?
Well, I think you would.
Let me preface that again, usually we're used to, it's like, okay, here's one area, it's either a an owner of the. Piece of property or it's an HOA for the entire, I think this is the first time that I've seen it broken into. Multiple HOAs with one subdivision.
Well, it's not be it won't be multiple HOAs, it will be it will be three condominium associations and then one HOA.
Okay.
So the way I envision it is that. Each condo association will be a member of the HOA and then the single-family dwelling will be a member of the HOA.
Okay.
So like the eight units would not contribute individually to the HOA as a as a condominium association, they would they would. Contribute one lump sum, but that fee that they would pay to be to pay the HOA will be part of their condominium fee. With their individual with their condominium.
Okay, I have two more things, one has to do, oh, snow. Removal, how is that going to be handled where snow is pushed? Has that plan been worked out? I don't know if Mr. Williams, you had a chance to think about where the snow might go?
Yeah. On on these lots in the road, it's it's pretty simple, it'll be done like it's done. You know, all over town, they'll push the road, the snow to the side and and these folks will. I don't know if they're gonna. You know, have their driveway taken care of or take care of themselves, but that would be cleaned up like it normally is. And then in here, it's a little bit trickier.
Yeah.
There are, there are places along the long driveway, they can push snow to the side. Here and here, and we've got some islands that have the ability to store snow. And then after that, if there's too much snow, it will have to be removed from the site.
Right, and I I think that's my point too, I'm I'm more concerned about the long stretch back to unit eight. Where don't want the snow pushed up right against that parapet and against the fence that's above the wall and have it. Push the wall out, I mean, I don't know if you've seen this before, but I have seen retaining walls. Get pushed out from the snowplow, pushed out after continuous storms where the ice is over and then they push it through. And it has broken down some retaining walls. So if if we could find a place where there was signage that said snow removal. Area, snow storage area.
Yep, okay, we will come up with that, I just want to respond a little bit, the. It's one of the reasons that that I suggested a precast concrete wall because. The block walls are the walls that I typically see failing from the snow. They both, they they fail from, you know, salt and and just the the pressure on those walls. They they don't stand up as well as a concrete wall, which is one of the reasons that we've 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 done that here. But we will, we will get some some markings and some signage on here.
Yeah, and as far as Mr. Spalding, under the zoning board on will has jurisdiction on that. They'll always make us do an operation and maintenance plan that will include some a snow removal plan.
Okay.
So in detail.
And last one on my list is the placement of the stop sign. Will that be on the property of lot one? Like how is, I I was confused to where that might be.
Right here.
Oh, it's right there, okay, alright.
Yeah, there's a stop line here and then stop sign goes right with it. That's not on, that's the properties over here.
Okay, so that that darker line, well, I was wondering if kind of like where I am here on Gould Street. We own that patch of grass, we have to take care of it. And I noticed there's a tree right at the stop sign, and I'm glad you put the stop sign in front of the tree. But that's for the owner of the. Lot lot one to take care of that area, is that correct?
Well, yeah, normally the the person that lives here. Cuts that piece of grass, but they don't own it, right? It's that's it's in the roadway, so. Yes, normally folks that live, you know, here, take care of this grass and this person takes care of this grass. And they would mow around the sign.
Okay. Alright, thank you, I appreciate all the work that's been done on this.
Any other members of the planning board have any other comments they'd like to bring up at this time?
Yeah, I I I do just to. I I think refresh my memory, what about about the sightlines on Salem, so. Not an issue anymore, you said low vegetation, right?
Yeah.
Does that, does that tree get in the way next to the stop sign or not?
No. There was, there is no issue, but the the TAC just simply said. That they would like us to have a low planting area out front to to. Enhance the site distance, but they didn't see any issues with site distance of traffic.
Okay, thank you.
We accommodate, we say, you know, they said. Let me just see if I can stay with me for a second. Give you the exact term.
Hey, Richard, could you pull up the rendering plan? The the plan with the 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 various colors, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is that the right one? You another one that was in here that is a little more, I'll say cartoonish looking? Yes, can you just zoom in on that intersection just because we spent a lot of time talking about this and my understanding is that this was the reason why this. Proposed area wasn't developed previously, but the, my understanding is that. There's an existing tree near where this curb cut is, and that's what was originally impeding. And the the owner was able to get control of that land with the the tree that was providing the sightline issue and that's how. That issue is mitigated.
Correct.
And. And then when you guys looked at the TAC, is that. Right adjacent to the si- stop sign where you have the six, the, I think it's a dogwood or dogwood bush or something like that. Denoted that CK, the stellar pink, the dogwood, is that? In the in the sightline of Salem Street or is that far enough back that it's not going to impede your ability to see around?
It's far enough back, the way that it's measured is your back. Fourteen feet from the edge of the the. Either the traveled way or the fog line, which in this case, I think it's the fog line. And the stop sign is further back than that. So it it. You know, you you're back here for the stop sign, but your sightline is like out in in here. So you're you're past that tree.
And so that 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 darker green tree is also going to be significantly fired further back. Plus the bend of the road means that you're going to have a good line of sight there.
That's correct.
Sorry, Mr. Knowles, that was a question.
No, that that that's just, that's totally helpful, I I really do appreciate it. The and. Right, how much tree removal versus existing tree protection?
So really, the the trees that are remaining are the trees that are in the twenty-five-foot no disturb.
Got it.
The rest of them, because of the amount of grading that needs to happen are need to go.
Alright, understood, understood, alright. The and going going back to Bill's comment about signage and regarding snow removal and and. The storage locations, is that a waiver or that's just that's just part of the O and M plan, I wasn't, it was.
Yeah, it'd be part of the O and M plan.
Okay, alright. The. I I have, is the the limited work line, the the property boundary all around? Or I was getting a little.
Yeah, I'll show you it, it's it's. It's on there. Find it for you. So this line with the circles in it goes around the property. And it's proposed silt fence with mulch sock slash limited work line.
Okay.
So that's, and again, it goes around the property and bumps out around the the. Conservation Commission's no disturb out here.
Yeah, okay. Alright, but the the edges on on lots one. One, two, and four are the the property edge, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna take down what's there and do new plantings.
Okay, yeah, alright. Yeah, I I have some more. Academic questions about the the drainage report. Or to get a lot, to get some more orientation and and understanding, but. Yeah, if you want to, I'll ask those when we step through that.
Yep, Mr. York or Ms. Weekly, do you have any? Either you have any comments or concerns you'd like to bring up at this time?
I think. No, Kevin, you go ahead.
I think most of mine were addressed, but one just to clarify, on this black and white, it looks like the stop sign. There's a tree on that small patch of grass right behind it. But on the cartoonish version, there was no tree there. So will there be a tree behind that stop sign or? Will there not be one?
No, there will not be one, I apologize, because this is the tree, this is the tree plan here.
Okay.
We'll take care of that. Thank you for that.
No, you're welcome.
So I just wanted to clarify, did you say there were going to be three separate HOAs here or are they all going to be? Is it going to be just all the same HOA of thirteen units?
Sure, so there'll be. There'll be, you know, the term. I use it, there'll be three condominium associations, so the two families will each be condominium, separate condominiums.
Okay.
Okay, so lot one will have a condominium, say call it the lot one condominium. And those will be two condominium units that are their own condominium.
Okay.
Lot four will have a condominium, lot four condominium that has two units. And then lot three will be a separate condominium with its own association with eight units. And then lot two will have a single-family dwelling. So all four will be members of a separate homeowners association. To manage the whole subdivision.
I think my only concern with that is, you know, just in my experience. When it's small, when you have eight units, they typically will hire somebody to do snow removal and they're on top of everything. And they'll either have a professional management company, but regardless, they're hiring people to do snow removal, etc. But for the smaller ones, if if we are concerned about snow removal and maintenance. I'm just, you know, with the smaller associations, I just find that, you know, they're usually not hiring anybody to do most of that work. And sometimes it it doesn't get done in a timely fashion or, you know, done particularly well.
Yeah, that point point is well taken, so I mean, part of what we're contemplating is is that the HOA. Would be responsible for snow removal on all the all of the driveways. They would just deal with snow management on the whole, on the entire site, or any alternative. We haven't decided that, you bring up a good point, we might, you know, say that for snow removal on each of their properties. Each property is responsible for snow removal on their on their individual properties because the town is going to be plowing the street. So we we have to fine tune that and and we will and we'll we'll let you know what we decide. So you know, you're you're in you're in the scoop on on how we're going to go about it.
Okay, great, yeah.
I agree with you on that point, I know what you're saying, that, you know, I I understand.
I think that's my only question.
So in that case, I I want to circle back to, there was a comment related to. The retainage basin, I believe is directly under the road or the driveway that leads to unit eight. And in the stormwater report, there is some instances of, I believe, a hundred-year events where there's going to be an overflow. Can you walk us through where in the assist in the event that that does require? Or does overflow, where is that envisioned to go and has that? I'm sure that you guys are going through this with the con con, but what what's the impact or what's the the result of an overflow event?
So as part of this design, there is a a a swale. On the low side of the wall that. Is designed to keep any water flow on our property, you know, on the downside of the wall. To contain it in this location and then out to the back. The overflow from that system in the hundred-year storm would come out and discharge through the wall in this location. And then end up in the swale.
And when you say swale, it's basically a fancy term for ditch that's going down to the pond?
Yeah, it's not really a ditch, it's it's more gradual, it will be. Grasped, so it's not, it's very rarely going to get flow. In in a storm event, it's a one in a hundred times. So there won't, there won't be a ditch or the need for a ditch. But there is a little bit of flow that will fall in here, we want to make sure that it's. Contained on our property and not not being pushed to via butters and we we've been talking to them about that. Ad nauseam and and are making some. We think some changes to it. To the swell, just location of the swell. So that we can appease them, but we're we need to work that out with the. The town engineer and them together, so.
But it 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 conceptually is envisioned as a belt and suspenders, we've got, their retention basin is doing. Ninety-five percent of the work and then you've got this swale as a backup system in case anything happens.
Yeah, it gives a location for uh outflow from that. Um I mean, you need it in the hundred year storm, so we wanted to have it um and we don't anticipate that there um you know, there'd be be other issues, but I suppose if there were, it would it would give a location for uh uh for a flow to go.
And that's also why you've got the the top of the parapet is two feet above the the final grade. Because that will provide a mechanism that the water will be uh not overflowing that that retaining wall, right?
Um yeah, I mean, it's not re- really wasn't about that because we're pitching that that towards the driveway. But the the reason for the parapet is so that uh a car doesn't go off the edge. Um you know, it's it it's a built-in guardrail. Um and then and then because of the um because it's more than four feet high, we've gotta have fall protection. Um so the combination of the parapet and the fence need to be at least forty-two inches high. Um so that's the reason, you know, it's more more safety um. But there there is no uh scenario where the the runoff from this is gonna end up in that swell.
Understood. And then the uh the other thing is, can you, in terms of maintenance or long term? Can we talk about, you know, these sys- these stormwater systems? What is the maintenance requirements of the system look like for the homeowners?
Um that's a good question. The the majority of the uh the maintenance occurs in the pre-treatment devices. So we've got uh deep sump catch basins. So catch basin that's got a four-foot sump in it and this oil grit separator. And any flow goes through those systems. The majority of the material gets deposited in the catch basins. And um the the annual maintenance program in- includes going out there and seeing how much sediment is in the in the basin. When it gets to a certain elevation, uh they need to be cleaned out and doing that um you know, prevents excess um particulates from ending up in the oil grit separator, which also at that time you um of checking the catch basins, we check these, go into the covers, check the sediment depth. If that needs to be cleaned out, they clean those out. Um and then there's inspection ports in these uh subsurface systems. And I've been doing them for a long time and um they really don't get sediment buildup. It all happens uh in the pre-treatment device.
And so really the the pre-treatment devices where as long as there's periodic maintenance and there's not enough sediment, the system should continue to flow and operate.
Correct.
Um and then I wanted to circle up on the limited work plan. Uh so I noticed that it looks like the limited work plan is uh on the plan south section of the of the kind of direct where between unit five and four. It's looks like is that the intent to have the limited work essentially slammed up against where that retaining wall is? Cause I would imagine there's gonna have to be some amount of excavation outside of the footprint of the retaining wall where you're gonna be disturbing the existing condition.
Yeah, there is um and there's there's a small um a toe to that wall. Um if you know what I mean, the footing is cantilevered, but most of the footing goes back into the site here. Um and you know, we've seen the soil and we feel like we can make that excavation without uh without having a problem.
Okay, then that leads into the other questions. Uh what are we looking at in terms of existing vegetation in that zone there? Uh beyond the limit of work and are there any trees that we're saving? Uh as part of that, I think that we talked about a a you know, tree protection at some point. I'm sure that you're gonna go through with Concon, but I just wasn't sure where we stood as it relates to identifying specifically that shaded area where your cursor relatively is. Is there anything that we're saving there?
We did. We located all of the trees that lie within that and they're plotted on a plan. Um we'll get you that plan, but uh there are, you know, a substantial amount of trees that are uh that are in there. We also showed the stuff that's into the wetlands, so you can see that too.
And what are we envisioning for that with the interface between where we have a construction zone and where the trees are to make sure that we're not gonna have a bunch of dead trees?
You mean in terms of uh protection during construction?
Correct.
Uh well, we can do a snow fence around it. I mean, we're gonna have um we're gonna have our um our our silk fence and a limit of work are one in the same, so typically when we do the silk fence, that's an indication of uh we don't go any further than that.
I'd advocate based on what we've been seeing on some of our other construction efforts to have a snow fence with there's like a defined barrier there. Just to make sure that we're all on the same page that those trees are getting saved and we're not gonna have a bunch of uh uh inadvertent trees go go away.
Okay.
Yeah, we can we can um we can have our lands, you know, I've done this before. Bill Fleming, our landscape architect, can probably give us a spec on, you know, kind of a a a specification on how to do that, Jim. That we can um we can add to the landscape plan or the or the subdivision plan, but we'll talk to him because he's qualified to to look out there and to come up with a with a scope on how to make sure that happens.
Thank you. Uh so that's all the questions I had. Uh Mister Noel, I know you mentioned you had some uh other questions on the stormwater report you potentially wanted to bring up.
Yeah, and um I I think it's uh uh it would help help me read the 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 next storm water report from Williams and Spirages. Um so uh what um I did take away was the the real positive of much of a a a great deal of uh sort of a reduction um of of the overall uh volume of of uh of runoff in in tables table six showing a reduction between twenty-five to thirty-three percent. So that I I think I'm reading that right. Um you made you made a point that um uh it was more at it was more specific to use the NOAA fourteen atlas rainfall data. Um because that was more site specific and uh um more useful, but then you said the model was using the exfiltration rate uh eight point two seven inches per hour instead of the test results that were actually higher. And I I wondered what the what the reason for that was.
Yeah, that's not rainfall. Those aren't rainfall numbers. The
Okay.
Those are the rate that the um the uh soil can accept water. And our test results were very high. We used a lower number, meaning we were being conservative about how much um infiltration we were getting within those subsurface systems.
Okay, alright, so I I I I understood it backwards. Got it. Um and um the uh um uh is there is there a a useful life for the nineteen ninety-three Cornell study? Um when when does that uh get pilloried by the industry?
When whenever they tell us.
Yeah, okay, alright.
You know, it's hard to tell um. Those numbers are, you know, they're likely to change. They keep they keep um you know, adding to their database and uh every once in a while they they modify it um. It never goes down. I can tell you that.
Alright, okay. Oh, oh, I'll do some more uh learning about about that. Okay. Um tho- those were it for me. Um so thank you.
Okay, and then before we open up to the the public, um I I'm not sure if this is a Richard or Attorney McGarry out question, but could we potentially just go through and quickly highlight any of the um the conditions that you're looking for additional guidance on or waivers that are being requested rather?
Well, if you recall, the um we we at one of the earlier meetings, we presented uh uh the waiver list in detail.
Yep.
And they'll list it on the plan.
Have there been any ma- material changes or are they all?
They're all there, but we're gonna fine tune those depending on, you know, what happens with the town engineer report. Uh any tweaks that we have to address concerns of our friends on Nablus as we go work with them. And then and then we can present a um a detailed waiver. As far as the major one is the roadway width and and what you would ask for at an early stage is kind of what we call a meal plan. To make sure that we could do these lots if we complied and didn't need a waiver and and we had showed that. Um but the other ones are more technically oriented. Um and we won't, we're happy to go through them again, but it's gonna be voluminous and it's gonna take a lot of time and and we did it before, so it's up to you.
If as I if 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 there hasn't materially changed from what we've already reviewed in detail, then I don't feel the need to go through the effort again. I just wanted if there was any changes, uh open it up and and or if you're looking for any additional guidance.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay. Any any other members of the board have any other questions, concerns, or comments before I open it to the public?
Mister Chi, I have the, you know, it you're prerogative, obviously, but I've got the landscape plan and architectural plans. I if if you would want those first or public comment first? Doesn't matter to me, just to remind you that I wanted to show those to you.
Yep, uh what I'd like to do is I'd like to take take comments from the public and then other things that are more uh for reference in nature. Uh we can do it after. I just don't wanna have people get confused and comment on things that are not the purview of the board at this meeting.
Yep, makes sense. Thank you.
Do you want me to leave my uh stuff up on the screen here?
Uh yes, please. I think that'd be helpful. Um so as a reminder for as we're getting ready to open up to the public, please feel free to raise your hand. If you have the ability, please turn on your camera and make sure before you provide any public comment to say your name and the address uh your your address. So with that being said, as a reminder, you know, this is a an ongoing process and as you've heard, there's been lots of back and forth, but anyone who has from the public who wishes to comment on the proposal as set forth in front of the board, please feel free to raise your hand at this time. I see Ed Smith.
Hi, yes, I I'm Ed Smith and I'm at one sixty-two Salem Street in Wakefield and Director of Butter to the project at hand. And most of my concerns are with the development out back, not so much the front part of it. Although I have do have some concerns with the traffic and congestion, as I mentioned before, with the being on a bad corner. And um could be detrimental for the safety of the neighborhood. But um the back part, I'd be really um afraid of what's gonna happen to these trees where we don't quite know yet. There's so many trees back there that if they do happen to go, are gonna take away from the um just the uh aesthetic value of the neighborhood. And it'll also like um I I would say probably decrease home values for anybody in the immediate area. As a lot of people seem to enjoy the nature that's there. Another comment would be um I don't think the yeah, the runoff is really highlighted where it should be. I think it's gonna be a lot worse than people think. Like these one in a hundred year storms seem to be happening like every five years now at the most uh due to all the environmental damages already occurred. So I think um you know, you gotta look at that as far as the natural habitat of the animals are concerned. And um you know, somewhere it's gotta stop, uh not gonna have anywhere else to go. Now, the front pile looks fine. You can throw another couple houses up there, but I think with uh the back and um you know, the runoff and everything out the out the back way, it's only gonna be like twenty-five feet to the wetlands. I just don't think it's gonna work. I mean, I think it's gonna be a lot worse flooding than you think. And um it's gonna cause a lot of problems, but um other than that, I know it's their land. They can do what they want, but um I I think some somewhere the line has to be drawn, you know, so. That's about all I have to offer. I'll let somebody else go next.
Thank you. Next, I see Paul uh uh Levano.
Yeah, hi Paul Levano. Uh you got it right. Uh I'm at one sixty-eight Salem. Uh I'm Ed's neighbor. Um I pretty much agree with everything Ed said. Um I do have one question and it's please forgive my nat- nativity. Um units one through eight, I'm trying to read the grading on these um images on these prints. It's hard to make out. As far as um one Nablus and then the eight um units in the back and then Ed Smith's property. What is the order of elevation that's gonna happen? Wh- wh- which is the high side? Which is the low side of the retaining? How much of those eight units gonna be raised up is I guess my question.
Mister Williams, I think that that's that's
Um these units, the front of these units, you know, facing each other here. Um those elevations are elevation sixty-nine and the um the grades outside on when you you're asking about uh Nablus. Um it's about sixty-three out here. So five feet higher. So this this is the low side of the wall. This is the high side of the wall. And then um again, the wall drops down, so this is the low side um and the low side over here is uh varies between elevation sixty to uh uh sixty-eight.
Yeah, that's part of my concern. So you're you're gonna add a lot of fill there. You're gonna bring those units up above the existing terrain.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so that's gonna make them much more visible to the abutters. Cause right now, if you follow the existing terrain, they would be below a lot of our sightlines. So you guys are gonna bring everything up and it leads into Ed's concerns of um neighboring property advice, cause now we're gonna have condos in our backyard that are gonna be above everything else uh if I if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it depends how you look at it. This there's a hill here um and the grade at the you know, where it starts to slope down is like seventy-two up here. And the top of our foundation is three feet below that. So we're below the grades that are up here. Um but above the the lower grades, so.
Okay, um well, like Mister Smith, I I do agree. I think a much and I don't know, I'm pretty sure this is gonna go forward as is. Um but I think it would be a much nicer and fitting with the neighborhood much better if it was another single family or even another duplex put on lot three rather than those eight units. I understand the owners want to maximize their uh they wanna max maximize their investment um. Another question I have for those eight units is how much parking is there back there? Like when they have guests, where is the parking gonna happen, take place?
Well, there there are garages with parking out in front of the garage. And there's a a couple of guest spaces.
Okay, okay. And I guess my final uh question is, who is responsible for the clearing and maintaining of the sidewalks along Salem Street? Uh I asked only because the current owners haven't been taking care of snow removal this past winter and I'm worried that that's gonna go forward with the new owners.
If that's a town bylaw, whoever whoever's, you know, those owners are gonna have to maintain them. If not, it's a pretty easy call to the town that they're not and they get fined.
Okay. No, cause could the existing owners didn't do it this winter? They were not cleared. The owner's looking to build this.
Well, he had tenants. I mean, you know, they did, you know, he never got a notice from the town of non-compliance, so.
I'm just stating what happened this year, that's all. Uh tho- those are my two big concerns. Like I said, I think um uh I agree with Mister Smith. Um I I don't know, we have no problems with the cul-de-sac and again, the owners can do um obviously what what they like with their own land. I would just, I think it'd be much nicer to see just another single family, another duplex on lot three. Um and that's uh that's it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to uh to provide any comments? I see Kevin. I see Kevin uh, uh, Guinea.
Sorry about that. I had trouble getting my uh, video and uh, sound going. My name's Kevin Gany. I'm an attorney. I represent uh, the abutters, uh, Nablus Road Realty Trust. I just wanted to inform the board that I had sent a copy of a report or a letter rather from a consultant to the board earlier today. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings with the developers to go through uh, my client's concerns regarding drainage and the topography of the site. Uh, I just wanted to note it on the record that we've submitted a letter to the board. And uh, we're gonna continue to work with the developers to try to find ways to uh, satisfy my client's concerns regarding the drainage and the topography.
Thank you for uh, for providing that and I will make sure that that letter makes its way to the, to the every, all the other members of the board.
Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wish to uh, provide any comments? Okay, seeing none, I will move to uh, or I will close public comment at this time and turn it back over to Attorney McGrail with the supplemental materials that you were referencing that you wanted to share with the board for additional context.
Mister, Mister Chair, before um, Attorney McGrail jumps in, can I just um, add a point of clarification?
Sure.
Um, so with the retaining wall, I know there were some um, numbers thrown out there, meaning sixty-nine feet and sixty-three feet, if I remember correctly, for the point that was being made. Remember from that sixty-three low point on the bottom of the wall side, that wall is going to extend up two feet above the sixty-nine feet on the high side of the wall. I just wanna make sure that's clear to the abutters that that wall is two feet higher than where the grade is. And Mr. Williams, correct me if I'm not understanding this.
No, you're correct. In fact, we um, we, when we uh, displayed those elevations, we say bottom of walls two point five, top of wall finished grade and then top of wall of the parapet.
Okay.
Uh, which indicates the uh, the two feet. So yes, you're correct.
Okay, so from sixty-two, five and then to seventy-one is the height of that wall. Um, just to wanna make sure that Mr. Smith and Mr. Um, um, Luvano know that. Okay, that's all.
Okay. Uh, anything else from any other members of the board before I open it back to Attorney McGrail? Uh, seeing none, uh, Attorney McGrail and or Richard, are there any other materials that you wanted to present for additional context?
Yes, I would like to um, just kinda quickly cursory look, just to bring up some points um, into kind of um, elaborate on one of your comments, Mister Chair. Someone, if I could share my screen.
Go for it.
So this is a landscape plan uh, that we submitted and I just wanted to reference um, we hired a landscape architect, Mr. Fleming. He's excellent. Um, and he has done an extensive landscape plan for the entire site. Um, and if you notice, um, he actually does have a note here to protect existing tree line and vegetation. Um, but what is kind of um, uh, tagging on to what you said, Mister Chair, I think in, in the notes of this, we can have him put a spec on how that's gonna be done instead of just saying it, leaving it up to somebody. Um, but um, I just wanted to, to reference that there is, this is a significant uh, uh, landscape plan. It's probably one of the most extensive I've ever seen in my uh, career. We, we are actually planting ninety-two trees on this site. Um, we're planting a hundred and sixty-three shrubs and a hundred and ninety um, grass plants or perennial plants. So um, it's very extensive and, and zoning board looks in detail at this. They will have a very detailed O and M plan on this. Um, to make sure that those trees are maintained and remain living and replaced when they, when they die. Um, or if they die, hopefully they don't, but they, you know, so the tree, dead trees just don't stay there or plants. So um, they'll also require um, irrigation in appropriate areas to make sure that they're appropriately watered uh, when needed. So that's the first thing that I just wanted to uh, point out how extensive this plan is on, on um, landscaping. And then I'd also like to just share quickly um, for context, the architectural. Which again is really not jurisdictional, but just to have a full flavor of the uh, entire project. Just bring these up and I'm not kidding. I submitted these. You can look at the floor plans in detail. I think it's more relevant if I can kinda just show you the elevations. We had talked, we had talked about um, you know, early on, this was a, a multifamily garden uh, building that had been proposed years ago. It would have, you know, been one big building out back. I think it had over thirty units in the back and and going back, we thought this was more appropriate for the property in the neighborhood. So this, this is kind of a, an overshot of how this is gonna look. You know, there was a talk about impact on neighbors. This is all wetlands back here. There's really, you can see the buffer, the trees that are gonna be maintained here. Um, so that's a, that's a real good look. Um, this is, this is, our architect has really worked to make this fit in, natural materials, natural colors. Uh, this is the cul-de-sac on the left as you come in um, to uh, in between the units. Uh, as we mentioned, each unit is gonna have in essence four parking spaces, which is excessive and way beyond the requirements. Um, this is just another shot. So these are gonna be really warm. They're gonna front the cul-de-sac. So when you're pulling in, you're kinda seeing, you know, a, a nice frontage on these two units, which are welcoming. Uh, we've also specked a beautiful uh, stone wall with a fence at the end of the cul-de-sac uh, with kind of a, a gated area to go into the townhouse um, aspect of the project. And you can see the extensive buffer around the, around the property. And this, this highlights the fence and the potential sign that we'll work out with the zoning board. Uh, these plantings are reflective of what's on our landscape plan. Um, and this kinda shows, you know, really um, the appropriateness of the, of the size, the height, well below zoning requirements on the height. And um, in the colors that really, you know, what Nick Leo wanted to do is instruction to the architect was I want this to be something like, like you see up at Loon Mountain, that it just kinda fits into the um, into the um, landscape and doesn't shout out. Just some, a couple of shots. This is inside. So up, you'll be exiting going here. And these are the four units in the back that are staggered. That's what the architect wanted to do with a lot of roof line and a lot of detail. Just a couple more shots. This is the wall, the retaining wall that we've talked about how it gets shorter and higher with the, with the fence. And these are the backs of the units um, that will face out back towards New Salem Street. And hopefully that um, that just gives a little context for the project as a whole. I hope that helps a little bit contextually.
Thank you for that. Um, Attorney McGrail, I, I think that we've talked about this, but I just wanted, seeing the photo, the, the renderings. Has there been any communication with emergency service related to uh, servicing the eight u, eight townhome units that are past the cul-de-sac? My, my assumption is that that's a conversation that's occurred, but I just wanna double check.
It has, yeah. When we made, when we made the change to the plan going from thirteen, uh, we met with the fire chief and the deputy fire chief uh, and sat down with them with this plan and they had no issues with it. The only thing they wanted was the hydrant um, that uh, which we has pointed out earlier in the, in the townhouse project. But they were fine with it.
Okay. So you're, you're, so in terms of next steps, uh, I think for right now, you have eh, the feedback from us. We're waiting for information from the town engineer review of the stormwater plan. And then uh, you're going through the process with CONCOM and ZBA. Do you have a sense of when you'd want to have, to come back for this board related to this, the, the finalization of this plan?
Yeah, so uh, we do. Um, we're gonna be at the zoning board tomorrow. Um, and then my anticipation with them, they'll probably, you know, we'll give them the overview that we gave you tonight, then they'll say that they probably wanna look at some components of the project separately, separately. Usually architectural aspect comes first on the townhouses, so we'll probably be back before them in, in two weeks. But there's a lot of work that has to do, has to be done on the drainage aspects of this as far as review goes. And back and forth, we've got work to do with the town engineer. You heard from Attorney Gini tonight. We've got work to do with the, our friends at one Nablus. So we're gonna need some time to do that. Um, so I would suggest that uh, although we might continue on a little bit more of an aggressive path with the ZBA on the lot three townhouse aspect for the subdivision as a whole, I think if we, if we schedule, if we skip a meeting and, and put it on in a month, hopefully we're ready to come back. If not, we can just let you know uh, and continue it depending on where we are with those components. So definitely not at the next meeting, Mister Chair.
Are you thinking that you wanna come back to us uh, on the June tenth or the June twenty-fourth?
Like to schedule for June tenth at this point and if we're not ready, we can just uh, send a letter and continue it.
Okay.
And the other aspect of that is you're extended to August one at this point. Um, for your timeframe, as you know, we, we coordinated that. So I would just at this point suggest, I think it'll be done well before this, but I hate dealing with extensions in the summertime, you know, somebody you don't have a quorum or you know, people just kinda lose track of things in the summertime. It's just human nature, so I would respectfully request that we would offer you uh, an extension until October one. Just to, just to give some breathing room. Hopefully we're done way before that, but I just don't like uh, deadlines hanging over people and potentially deadlines being missed.
Uh, I think the, I, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the board, but based on my understanding, I think we'd be amenable to uh, putting a request. It, we, we have to request to you for the ten-one and then you accept it.
Yes, yeah, and we're, we're, we're happy to do that.
So uh, I'll, I'll open it up to other members of the planning board, but is, is any other member of the planning board had an objection to us requesting an extension to ten-one? Okay, so in that case, Attorney McGrail, you and I can coordinate offline uh, and we will send that. We'll, we'll coordinate that paperwork uh, to do another extension of this to ten-one.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, so in that case, uh, I have you on the, the books for our uh, June tenth, twenty twenty-five continuance of this public uh, meeting. And then you will, we'll reach out to you to make sure that we're still on track. If not, I would anticipate that we would kick you out to the June twenty-fourth meeting.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other members of the planning board have any other comments, questions, concerns related to the subdivision before we uh, close this item and move to the next one?
Right, so just a record, we continued to June tenth and extended uh, until ten-one.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, just to say thank you to the um, to the abutters for their uh, their participation in this and uh, and to say thank you to the, the owner for working with the abutters too.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for uh, for all working together, trying to make this uh, successful. Okay, so in that case, I will close item number four and proceed to item number five, the signage overlay district. So by way of introduction to, for folks, so the uh, so the information that was included in the packet today uh, for the meeting was a draft of the signage overlay district that the bylaw review committee is working on. Uh, so at our last joint meeting with the bylaw review committee, it was identified that there's an interest in the signage overlay district being amended. Uh, because of the, specifically to address the lack of a signage design review board. And in, now there's no mechanism for people within the signage overlay district to have signage approved uh, because that board has not sat for some time. So uh, the, for, just for clarification, this is not the current signage overlay district. This is part of the recodification, which I understand is scheduled for fall town meeting uh, based on correspondence that Kevin and I've had with Chair Lieber. Uh, so I, what I would propose that we do, because my understanding is this is actually blocking signs right now, is I propose this board uses the proposed recodification language, evaluate it as a starting point, starting, you know, with a process that we could lay out tonight as a group and try to bake that in as part of the, either the recodification effort or have a separate zoning amendment at the fall town meeting uh, based on what makes the most sense. But I wanted to at least start that conversation with the rest of the board, see if everyone is in general concurrence and then we can kinda figure out what the next steps are.
Yeah, Mister Chair, that sounds good. I, I, I know I sent a message to you later. I didn't receive, I don't, maybe it was my email, but I didn't get an attachment on the last message.
Yeah, you're not the only one. I believe that there was a, an error. The uh, the, the current zoning uh, did not.
Okay.
For whatever reason attached, but um, if you just go to our E-code, you can find the, those that I was trying to attach, yeah.
Yeah.
As well as the current um, map. So if you bear with me for a second, I'm gonna close out the one fifty-eight, one fifty-four Salem Street material. And then I'll pull up the overlay district that we're specifically talking about. So this is for reference, this is the overlay district as it currently is in our zoning map. And so really we're talking about a signage that's along north, along Albion and then along Main Street in our downtown area, as well as a handful of other pockets, kinda more in the uh, southern portion of Main Street. Um, as you go through the balance of the town. So that's conceptually where we're talking about, that currently signage is unable to be, this is not a clear mechanism how you can get signage approved. And then the uh, existing signage overlay, so the, the plan that I sent to everyone is a copy of the bylaw review committee and their progress. And that also includes comments from both Aaron Kokinda, Town Economic, the uh, Planner or Town Economic Development um, staff as well as Sam Elliott, who is the town planner, who's sadly no longer with us. So uh, I'm open to, to however we as a group want to, to go through this process. So you, we can either go through the whole signage overlay or we can kinda outline a process for one of us to go do a, a, a read through every, through it, identify the items that require, I'll call board input, and then we can start coming up with a draft of the signage overlay.
Do we wanna wait to see what ZBA does at their meeting with this since they're looking at it too?
So yes, thank you, Kevin. Kevin, do you wanna maybe just update the board with regards to the conversations we've been having with the ZBA to date?
Sure, so they invited um, an old board member, Jim McBane, who also was the one who wrote the signage overlay district language um, to look at it with them. So they're gathering comments as a board. Uh, from my understanding, they're gonna be looking at it t- uh, tomorrow night's meeting as well. And then hopefully we'll have a uh, draft, a finished draft that they can share with us. Um, that sort of improves upon what was there before and is a, is something that we can move forward with considering there is not a, a um, sign review board at this time.
And by way of additional context, I started looking at what we, where we would need to be in order to accommodate this for fall town meeting, as much crazy as it is to say, since we just had the spring one. But just generally, we need to get something uh, submitted to town council uh, by late September, somewhere in like, like the nine twenty-two range for reference. So I know how fast the summer can typically go for at times, so that's, that's why I wanted to at least start the conversation now and to plotting out how we wanna do this.
So. And uh, um, if we were to be getting, like um, we had to, we had to make a motion on town on the, at, and at meeting to amend, to, to accommodate some changes based on public comment to the ADU bylaw. Um, we'd, we'd wanna, we'd wanna make sure we were doing, getting, getting enough public comment to make any uh, corrections uh, ahead of submitting to town council and, you know. But not that there might, there might not be a lot of comment about signage overlay.
Maybe si- signs, in my experience, typically get a lot of feedback.
Okay.
So I I think wh- what I would propose, unless anyone disagrees is. I I'd like to, if someone is is willing to raise their hand and kind of be the champion of going through. The document and identifying the things that we think warrant further board discussion. Or we could go alternate route where, you know, after we get the ZBA, we can literally do similar to what we do with the ADU, start. Top to bottom on a couple of meetings and just go through line by line as a board. Uh, I'm I'm amenable to whatever other members of the board think makes the most sense. I do think it makes sense not to do. A full deep dive tonight be on the basis that I'm not sure how much people have prepped for it and we um don't have that feedback from the ZBA. Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, um, I am not prepared to do a deep dive tonight, and I suggest we do wait until the ZBA, especially with um. Mister um, uh, Jim McBane, um, so he can go through and. It's, it's been a while since this signage bylaw was put together, so. I think it would be nice to hear what they want to do, and then we could do that deep dive, so I vote for the second option.
Good second, that's a good idea.
Okay, so uh Theo, Kevin, do you have any reaction to that?
I think that makes sense to wait to see what ZBA comes with. Um, the the one thing just from reading through it that maybe we all think about and have in mind before then is. How we're defining temporary signs, um, because that's referenced throughout this. I'll call it current version several times, and I I feel like there's some contradictory. Uh, inferences that are made where in in some instances, they're referring to them as. Um, like a for sale sign or a now open type of sign. Um, but then later, it it seems like it could extend for some period of time, um, and and the question in my head is. Are we counting a temporary sign as a temporary banner that a business might put up before they get a permanent? Type of sign, or are we counting that banner as a permanent type of sign, uh, because in some instances, it made it seem like that would be fine as well?
I think that makes sense. The other thing is I was looking through here is uh. I would encourage the board as you're going through, if if whenever we do get this on the books, to uh, to really think about. Some of the restrictions that we do or cannot want to apply. Um, there is specifically, we had some comments from some of the town staff, whether or not. Uh, right now, I believe any exposed external illumination is prohibited. And whether or not that's appropriate or not, so some of those kind of more nuanced technical questions, we should just make sure that we're we're thinking about, but. To your point, Mr. Spalding, maybe the best way is to, once we get to thinking of the ZBA, we just. Set aside a a basically one meeting's worth of time, and we just do a line by line, go through the death march.
I think that's a good idea, just because, you know, your point, Kevin, that. We could consider having these banners as like permanent signs. I mean, one of Wakefield's biggest issues is that we don't have, like, compared to other towns, like. It's in our downtown area is not very cohesive in terms of appearance. And the signs have a big piece of that, I mean, we definitely have some signs that. Look like garbage, so um, I think. Us going through it like piece by piece, once we get the ZBA recommendations is a good idea.
Okay, so in that case, what I'll do is uh I'll 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 work with Kevin and uh, once we get the the. The items in the ZBA, we'll make sure it gets out to the balance of the board, and then I'll uh see if we can schedule something uh in the. In the upcoming months, when we have a meeting that's light on other active board activities, and then we'll, we'll just go through it line by line. Okay, uh, anyone else have any other? Questions, concerns, comments related to signage district?
Not right now.
Okay, so in that case, I will move, close item number five and move to item number six. Items not anticipated by the chair, uh, any members of the board have items not anticipated they'd like to bring up at this time? Mr. Spalding.
Yeah, I just, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask, do we know what the status is for? Looking for a new town planner, has that come up at all as far as?
Yeah, so I I discussed with a member of the town council after town meeting. Uh, this very question, because I was con- uh, I was unsure what the status is. Um, the feedback I got was i- is budgeted for this year. So theoretically, that position could be filled. Um, that being said, the town councillor, not speaking definitively, but he's, they they indicated that. They did not anticipate that that position um would be filled until after town administrator was filled. Um, based on the town administrator being one of the main. People who's going to push that effort through, uh, so I anticipate that we'll get learn more as that. Town administrator role isn't isn't filled in. But the intent is to backfill that, Sam's Sam's spot. Uh, does that, any other questions or any other items not anticipated by the the board?
Um, yeah, I'll I'll jump in, um, the uh, uh. Housing production plan is uh going along, um. The, we are close to having a final uh document to. Submit to the uh town council for their for their review, and I will. Uh, double check uh when we want to also bring that, I mean, um, we did. We did present it to the planning board, um, give, give us an update uh from the from the committee, um, but uh. Um, I'll find out about uh bringing the final document or the the penultimate document back to the, back to the the planning board. So, but the, I I think the calendar is to have have it fully vetted and approved by the end of June.
So you anticipate that by end of June, that housing production plan will be. Issued or, you know, formalized?
Yeah, yeah, and um, and then um, there, there is still. The the follow-up process of submitting it to the state, but um, so.
And then similarly, is is. After the housing production plan is issued, do we anticipate that there's going to be specific actionable items at the board, this board should should take up?
Um, I think, uh. Yeah, because the, it's going to talk about uh sort of near term and and long term. Uh, uh, objectives and also about implementation, so I think um. It will be within this board's purview to uh think about how to maintain uh momentum. Um, and work with the the housing trust and uh. Other boards in town um to to keep this up, and certainly uh never to let it lapse again.
And then similarly, uh, kind of adjacent to that, I understand the master plan uh is working its way through. Do, do we know where that stands in terms of an estimated issuance or promulgation?
Um, I know that uh it's going through an extensive rewrite, uh, which now sits. Solely within uh town staff and um primarily Aaron Kokinda, so uh, you know, it's, it's. Um, yeah, it's a somewhat of an unwieldy uh rough draft that we ultimately uh. Bought from uh MAPC, so uh I know she's working on it and I I will circle back with her and. Volunteer to uh help get it over the line and get and bring it back to the this board sooner than later.
And uh, as it relates to that, that's also has a number of, I'll call it similar actionable items that we should. We should think about once it's, once it's promulgated.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Um, the next one I had on my list for item not anticipated by the chair is an update on the bylaw review committee. So uh Kevin, do you want to give an update to the board or where we stand on on that effort?
We have our next meeting next Tuesday, um, we are still. Tracking toward uh fall town meeting to present that to the legislative body for a vote. No real updates beyond that, it's been a while since we've met, so I think tomorrow. We'll be talking as a group to decide how uh when we want to pull in groups like planning boards, ZBA in for. Uh, another review on what we have so far.
And can you remind me, the last I was aware that, I think that they're up to version eight or something like that, is that intended to be? Quote-unquote the final, or is there intended to be one more rewrite from Attorney Bumbrowski?
I would anticipate probably one more rewrite, at least one more rewrite, um, so probably. Version nine or ten is what would most likely be presented.
Okay, and then um, can you just do me a favor and at your next meeting, put on your list to talk to them about? If we are going to make some changes to the signage overlay, how they would like us to proceed with that?
Yes. I, I would anticipate, since that will probably have more substantial changes from what's currently in the bylaws. That that might be separated as its own article. Um, if there's more discussion into not risk uh not passing. The larger codification set of bylaws.
I don't disagree, just I'd like to start how that conversation on the mechanics of how to make, make sure we're talking the same. We're, we're, we're both going in the same direction. Okay, and then the last item I have for an item not anticipated is uh for those members of the board who uh may recall one ninety seven Nahat Street. We reissued the letter, so separate from the issue with the trees that we've, I don't think we've received response from. Uh, Aaron Kokinda reached out because the homeowner's reached out to Sam Elliott before she left, and um. Folks may recall where there is a driveway, an existing driveway, um, that was included as part of that definitive plan. And the homeowner reached out and um indicated that they are interested in removing a portion of that turnaround, and they. So I'm not sure what the exact. Process is for that, but that's something that Aaron's looking at, and I'm, and then it's not trying to look at. But I wanted to at least make sure the board is aware, if you bear with me, I'm going to pull up the screen. So the specifics portion is, there's the, this existing. Set of parking spaces that's on the the final plan, um, it was not included as part of this truck workaround. Uh, or truck turning radius from what I could tell, and this is the existing dwelling that uh. The original applicant had, and they subdivided and then built. Or created this new lot that's buildable, and th- these are the trees that we've seen. Deep damage as part of that construction as a reminder, so the person who's reaching out to Ms. Kokinda is actually the original applicant who subdivided the land, not the. The new owners of the second lot, but this is something that's going to be potentially coming up. Uh, when I get a little smarter in terms of the process of providing relief from the final plan for. For that, if that's something that the board is willing to entertain.
So they're asking about removing that, like not?
Correct, removing that, those, those three parking spaces. Uh, Mr. Spalding.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't see any reason why those parking spaces. Need to be there, so it's not part of the turning radius, uh, yeah, that's fine, I don't. See in when um Eric Okinda figures out the right process, which I think they have to resubmit the drawing. They could submit it as an as-built, um, we've had that in the past, um, this would need to go to um. Would need to go to the town engineer, I think would be probably the most important, because if it does affect any type of drainage. Um, that they might want to um review that. Um, just a comment, after the letter was sent, I did notice. Uh, I have to look back on my notes, but I think it was April eighteenth when I did go by there. Um, and they did add the drainage um retention system and. It was in place where it should be.
Okay.
They put fencing around the two trees too.
Yeah, they just stood the fencing up.
Oh.
Correct, right, um, but.
It looks better.
More importantly about the um, they have like the hay that goes and they wrap it in. The mesh and that goes around to help so the drainage just doesn't run into the hot street or more importantly to the butter, um. And this view with that line of work note is, just if. Jim, you could point to that.
Talking about down, down here.
Line of work, yeah, but just where the contra lines start to flow to the right. And that goes low, um, right where the property line meets like a T to the right of that. Right over to the left a little bit more, that right here, right, yeah, you were there, warm. Yes, so that does run from the house foundation down past that tree towards that. Property line, and that's where they did add it through there and along to the existing driveway. But I do agree that those three spots, it's up, it's up to the homeowner, that if it doesn't, I would be glad not to pave anymore. Then needs to be paved.
Yeah, I think it's an existing condition, so they're looking to remove it, but I think that. Basically, what I'll do is I'll I'll reach out to Ms. Kokinda and say that uh, that our, it needs to go to. To the town engineer, but our understanding is that they either submit it as an as-built subdivision, or um. It's probably the 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 most logical next.
Right, if I remember correctly, they were repaving it all though.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's.
Looking at Google map, it looks like it's old asphalt that's not in great shape, so I'm sure.
Yeah, because when I did drive up and then I turned around, right in there when I took the pictures, yeah, okay. Thanks.
Okay, uh, so, I I know I had a big list, but that was, that's everything on my items anticipated, does anyone else have anything?
I have a lot of questions, but I'll ask those in an email.
Fair enough, fair enough, well, thank you, as I say, I'm sure that was like drinking from a fire hose for your first meeting with the subdivision, so uh, it's, they're not all like that.
All right, good. It's interesting now, it's very interesting.
Well, that was one of the better ones, it didn't get heated, it was really well presented. There wasn't, I I don't think anybody felt like we were trying to be, someone was trying to trick us to get something past us, so. Uh, uh, yeah, that that did go really, I think it went smoothly, so. It is a lot of technical information, and yeah, I think it's, uh, our board is equipped to handle a lot of the questions. That come up, um, none of us are experts in any one part of this, so don't feel like. We all know everything, we don't, but I think as a team, we'll, we'll pull it together well.
Good, I mean, I think it's very stupid to not have them all, all the units on that, in that development. On the same HOA, because I'm just telling you, a two-unit HOA does not, you know, it's, it's very dependent on who the two owners are, I mean. I don't know of a single one that clients own where they pay for, like, they agree to pay for the same snow removal. Or they have like any cohesive plan for landscaping, whereas when you have eight units, it's totally different. Like, they will maintain the landscaping, they will, because it's so large that they'll hire a company. And, you know, they'll make sure that company typically will make sure that if they're decent, sometimes they're not. That all of like the HOA regulations and all of the um, all the things that were put into place for. For drainage and for, you know, the appropriate type of plants and all of that. Um, are maintained, and but when you have two units, that just doesn't happen.
Yeah.
So, but I I didn't want to say too much, because I wasn't sure how much.
Well, I mean, this is, this is your business, so yeah, feel free to share, but I.
Honestly, you probably know more about it than the rest of us.
Yeah, that's why I asked, it's like, so it's one HOA and three condo associations, I wrote, I keep a lot of notes. I'm writing a lot. And it's just.
And it sounds like it's the two, two families, so each, each of the two townhomes, like the two unit townhomes are their own. The single family is nothing.
Yes.
And then you have the eight unit, I mean, it's just like, so basically you have four separate entities there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a, you're, if you, if we need any sort of like plan for, like, you know, the. For landscaping to preserve the, you know, pers- make sure that the, there's not runoff issues if. You know, we need anything to be maintained, having four separate entities, it's not going to happen with four separate entities.
Right.
It's not.
And I think um, something else on my list that I didn't ask tonight, that I was waiting for their ZBA meeting, I can't. I'll watch some of the video, I can't make it tomorrow night, but um. What's the street name, what are the addresses, so that's something we usually. What's the street name? What are the addresses? So that's something we usually wait till. The plan is somewhat finalized, and I think they're close, but once it goes through the ZBA, the ZBA could have them with. Comments from the public and everything else, this could change, so we'll see. But thank you for um for being part of our board. It's.
Have a lot, have a lot to learn, but.
Yeah, we all do still, so.
Yeah, oh, trust me, that doesn't go away.
Well, you guys all seem like you know what you're doing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um no, but it's 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 a good board. I think you'll find that, you know, with between. Bill's architecture background, I I my background in in. Commercial real estate and then Theo on the the banking side and Kevin, making sure that we all say the right thing, so we don't make other people mad. There's a there's a nice diversity of skill sets, uh and you're definitely uh being someone who. Who deals with real estate transactions for a living, it's a super useful. Skill set, because some of those comments you had related to what you actually are going to see from homeowners is stuff that someone such as. Uh the rest of the board might not not just not necessarily see on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, add Theo also has a a degree in um urban planning, so.
Right.
Yeah.
It's getting it's getting very dusty at this point, but yeah.
So we're talking, when they were bringing up like pictures of the plants, like. And this is on, obviously it backs up to wetlands, drainage is an issue. Do we have any say or can we make any recommendations regarding what types of plants? Because the plants they were showing in that illustration, it looked they had like some sort of like lavender or something. Like are going to do absolutely nothing for actually like retaining any sort of moisture or holding it into the soil like so. Is there anything that like, are we able to make that suggestion or is that more conservation that makes that suggestion?
Conservation won't talk about that, but they will talk if there's an issue with um soil and runoff into the wetlands. That's their jurisdiction.
So who would make a recommendation that they have like native plants?
We can, and that's something that as uh Attorney McGrath was talking about, the whole this is. It's not often that we get so uh such a developed um landscape architecture plan. So it when they add more comments, which is I think why we don't get them, because then we can start adding more comments. And discuss it more, but we could suggest that the landscape architect attends the next meeting to have those or Attorney McGrath. And that group can take our questions back to the landscape architect. But that is a great point about native species and everything, and yeah, that would be.
Because I had a develop, so I had a client that bought this lot in Reading, uh or bought this. Property in Reading, and I mean, it was kind of a logistical nightmare, like the engineering for the site was like a third of the budget. It was. You know, just mostly it was over an acre, but it was mostly wetlands. And the town of Reading had required that my client plant an additional, I think it was thirty-five native plants. Along in very specific locations as part of the ongoing conditions from conservation. And so, I mean, I really wanted to say something like that, but I wasn't, I don't want to sound like an idiot. Because I wasn't sure if that was like part of our purview, but like if they plant like lavender and lilies. And you know, I don't know. More way maples or something, like it's not actually going to help like. Main, you know, retain any sort of moisture in the soil. It's not going to help with like the the runoff in the, you know. In the water, the potential water issues, but if we if they get the right plants, it might make it. You know, even during really heavy storms, make it better. It's not going to make it perfect, but it would make it substantially better.
And this is this is where we start to trust um the other boards, but also we can ask for the landscape architect to explain. And is it and why these plants were chosen? And in the past, they've been really good at explaining, so we learned a lot about rain gardens um back a bunch of years ago. And there's a lot, if you go down Prospect Street past Parker. And Chestnut and Parker come together um where that mansion is up behind and to the as you're going towards Stoneham on the right. That first one going in, um there's three um houses in there and there's a rain garden. We worked on that a lot. We learned a lot. About how a natural rain garden could save from doing the below grade um capture. Uh for for stormwater and all that. So it's it is, there there is a way to do it, and I think. Um our board to ask for the professional and understand that they are speaking. They know their stuff and we learn from that. So I think Kristen, that's a that's the probably the best path to go is to ask Attorney McGrath. Uh questions that they could give to the landscape architect or have the landscape architect at the meeting in June twenty-fourth, whatever it might be.
Okay.
And then the other thing is just keep in mind, the um. We're really, when we're looking at this, we're looking at the subdivision of the lots. And then we're also making sure that they're providing adequate infrastructure to make sure that you're not going to have. The overflow drainage or, you know, make sure that the sewer is sufficient and or access. From a vehicular standpoint, but stormwater is one of the ones that comes up on every project we talk about pretty much. There are a lot of overlapping concerns with Concom, you you know, when you have that wetland impact. But that is something that is very distinctly in the the purview of our board, and so any questions you have on any of that, feel free to fire away, because. Um you know, we we end up with a lot of questions to the to uh Attorney McGrath. And other proponents similar of similar stature um who come before the board, you know, they're getting peppered with lots of questions and and. You know, even technical things like what Theo was talking about, like that's totally um in bounds.
Um to that point, um I mean, may. Um it would be nice to sort of codify a lot of this history or like these best practices that we're learning. Um that that's a whole nother level of work though, but um. I don't know, I you know, and I know some of that's out there, and I I'm sure like all of y'all are. More more aware of 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 it than than I am. Um but to, I mean. You know, we we redid our our subdivision rules and regulations so that we could have a lot more standardized um. Uh and and clear expectations upfront. Um so I mean, the the idea to push for na- native plants um. Really from the get-go would would be val- valuable.
Because a lot of like, I don't care how great a landscape architect is or is not. Most of the time, they are not going to use, they're going to use what's easiest or cheapest or most accessible, but like. We could we could push the issue on certain things like native plants, like most places won't use them unless they're required to. But they really do have a really positive impact on our environment. I mean, I've had like far, far less like issues with my my uh backyard being squishy. After I restored the wetland area in the very back and like made sure to use appropriate plants, took out the plants that. Were invasive and now, you know, my yard is less squishy and it's more usable. So.
That's cool.
Uh Mr. Chair, one thing to add to for the agenda for our next meeting is to discuss a summer schedule.
Yep.
Just don't coordinate any.
Yeah, exactly. So I'll put that on the on the agenda for our next meeting to talk about summer schedule. And then I believe the only other thing I have for the next meeting right now is the um housing production plan. I have to verify with uh with Aaron, but I believe that they're and Theo, correct me if I'm wrong. Think we think that um they're potentially going to be ready for a presentation to our board next meeting?
Hmm um I'll I'll double check, but yeah, um yeah.
Yeah, that's what um Sam sent me an email about, that on the twenty-seventh meeting, review HPP draft.
Yeah, that's what I had in my notes too.
Okay.
Now I'm looking at my my forward-looking agenda, so. Okay, in that case, anyone else have anything else items not anticipated by the chair?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn by Bill. Do I hear a second?
Again.
Oh, good.
There you go. Uh roll call vote, Kevin.
Yes.
Theo.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So thank you everyone for the time and uh we'll see you in a couple of weeks.